Call to order. This is the 29th regular meeting. And the mayor will lead us in pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mayor. Madam Clerk, can we give a roll call, please?
Councilman Cole.
Here.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Simmons.
Here.
President Clark. President Protem Mills.
Here.
Mayor Sidnor.
Here.
Yavacora, Mr. President.
Thank you. The fourth agenda will be the approval of the minutes for March 10th, 2025, regular meeting. Do the council have any questions or concerns? Can I get a motion?
Mr. President, I move that we approve the minutes from March 10th, 2025.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Madam Clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilman Cole.
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson.
Yes.
Councilman Simmons.
Yes.
President Mills.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Fifth on the agenda is the report of the mayor and city council. And we will start at the very end with Councilman Simmons.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good to be with everyone in person here this evening. A couple items to share in this evening's report. It was great to be able to join arms with the Laurel Board of Trade back on March 14th, as they did to ribbon cutting for their new location on C Street, just off Main Street. So for those of you who are small businesses, again, just want to encourage you to connect up with the Laurel Board of Trade. One, you're going to find some good fellowship with other small business owners where you can learn, share tips, resources, and even do business with each other, as well as through the Laurel Board of Trade. You're going to find a lot of resources to help you thrive as a business here in the city. So for those looking for the new location, basically you're on Main Street, go down C Street, which many people know that's where Cleopatra Winery is, Three Gear Games is also on that road. And at the end, there's some brick townhouses on your left-hand side, and they look like residents, but there's actually, the first one is for the Laurel Board of Trade. So feel free to visit them during open hours and good to see them in their new home. Related, I wanted to share, while I was there, I got a chance to talk with Connie Lightfoot, who is a photographer, small business here in the city, and had a great conversation. I had shared with her that the state of Maryland had been proposing a two-and-a-half percent sales tax on business-to-business services, including photography businesses like hers. And needless to say, she shared with me that that would really be an adverse impact on her ability to do business. I am happy to report back that the state has sort of scuttled that part of the bill. It's being replaced with a new bill, 3% sales tax on data and IT services. So there's a little bit of a change. But I was happy to see at least the state narrow their focus and not hit small businesses as hard as that first bill would have. There's still some more work to do on that front, but I did want to share an update because I've talked to a number of the small businesses in the city about that. So sticking for one more item on the tax theme, just want to let folks know that AARP has sponsored and in partnership here with the city to do free tax preparation at the Laurel Armory on Montgomery. So during Wednesdays, you do need to have an appointment, but if there's anybody out there that would benefit from that, from free tax prep, either coaching to prepare your own or having them do it for you, please avail of that. That's a great service. I did want to say a thank you to the city team for their assistance in response to a resident query about some trash in a part of Main Street. We appreciated your responsiveness for sure. And I wanted to thank also the residents who sort of take time to keep our city looking sharp, especially with all the wind we've been experiencing these last few weeks. I know my front yard, I feel like I'm constantly picking up things out of it as the winds carry it all over the place. So thank you for everybody who sort of pitches in to help our city keep appearing really smart. And also, I want to thank Acting Deputy City Administrator Tim Miller and DPW Tommy for joining me at the Selburne House on Main Street last Thursday. We met with the community there just to talk about safety on Main Street, crossing the street. And there's a number of really good improvements we've made over the last couple of years, and it was good to sort of be there, hear those concerns. And I know there's more to come. I think we've got a lot of good stuff, momentum on some changes in Main Street, so I'm excited to see that come, and thank you for being there. And thank also to the Selburne community for inviting us to come out. It was an honor to be with you. Just to mention one forward-looking thing, speaking of cleanup, that's I guess my theme for this evening. Laurel for the Patuxent on April 5th, we'll be doing a Patuxent River Cleanup. So I want to encourage folks to come on out for that. I believe it's 10 to 12 that morning, on a Saturday morning. And it's, you know, really nice to keep our river looking clean. I know a lot of us really enjoy walking down by the river, and it's a good respite from the hubbub of the city. So that concludes my report. Back to you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Simmons. And next will be Councilwoman Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Just briefly, I just want to share a couple of events. I guess we have what we're each passionate about, because I also have something from Laurel Patuxent, but it's not the cleanup. They're having a poetry printing workshop at 2:00 PM on that Saturday, April the 5th, at the Laurel Municipal Pool Room, where they're going to celebrate National Poetry Month with a free poetry writing workshop with the Laurel Arts Council. So it's free, but you do have to register at laurealartscouncil@gmail.com. And then also that day, again, to share some other resources. So April the 5th, Lars is having a Community Resource Fair and Grocery Giveaway from 12 to 2:00 at the Multi-Service Center. And then April 19th, there will be a Housing Resource Fair at the Multi-Service Center from 12 to 3:00. I guess our own Economic and Community Development is handling that, so check in with them for that. And then lastly, on April the 26th, in partnership with Wise, Winning, and Sports and Education, we'll be hosting three, and it's apropos, the students are here, student-athlete workshops on that day for basketball. So look for more information about that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. And next is Councilman Cole.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. My report, I was very busy at the beginning of the last two weeks. I apologize for missing our last council meeting. I was attending the National League of Cities Congressional Cities Conference in DC from March 9th through the 12th. While I was there, I attended the Finance Administration and Intergovernment Relations Advocacy Group meeting. I'm pleased to report that the city of Laurel is the first to pass the resolution advocating for the protection of tax-exempt municipal bonds. We were followed the same night by an emergency resolution by the city of Cleveland, Ohio. While I was there, I worked to advocate with other municipalities, with anyone that I'd spoke with, encouraging them to pass a similar resolution. I know at least 20 people that I've got that have introduced it in their city councils across the country. The night of our meeting on the 10th, I was a guest speaker on a panel in front of all the municipalities that were there for the conference, talking about the innovative things that Laurel did with all the American Rescue Plan Act funds that we received. They had heard about how we'd used our funds in the past at conferences and wanted to just get us out there to let everyone know what we did to protect us from future events and how responsibly we spent our money. Finally, on the 12th of March, I spent the day on Capitol Hill advocating for the city of Laurel and Maryland municipalities. I went to Senator Van Hollen's office, I was at Glenn Ivy's office, and several other Maryland delegates, even though they are not from our district, I was there on behalf of Maryland Municipal League to represent the municipalities across Maryland. Also, on the 12th, I attended the Laurel Pride Meeting. On the 18th, I attended the Laurel Cats Annual Business Meeting, hearing what they do for the city of Laurel to help us with our feral cat population. They were able to report that many of the feral cat colonies across the city are now going extinct because of their trap and release program. That's really good news for us as a city. That means those cats are not breeding and procreating and taking over our neighborhoods. They also have a lot of work that they've done with Foster to adopt. If anybody's looking for a cat, they will help with adoption fees for those. The best way to get cats from populating the neighborhood is to get them adopted into your house. Finally, to conclude my report, I wanted to mention that this Wednesday, the 26th, the Environmental Affairs Committee will be meeting virtually at 6:00 PM. Please email Taylor Harvey for the link to that meeting. And that concludes my report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. And next will be myself. And on March 9th, I had a good talk. I go to the Multi-Service Center and hang out, and just as a regular old Joe, go and just talk to the unhoused there. I bring snacks, I brought some snacks there. You know, a lot of them like the goldfish, so we call it gold fishing. So that was on the 9th. On the 13th, I was at the Mount Pilgrim Elementary Black History Production at Laurel High School. Go Laurel, you know? And that was an awesome event. That event was about the tour of HBCUs. I'm gonna say that again, the tour of HBCUs, all right? Got a young crowd out here tonight. And on the 14th, I was at the Board of Trade Ribbon Cutting. That was, as my colleagues say, they were there, we had a good time. I think that's a great space for them, even though it's not on Main Street, but it's a good location. I think they're going to be there for many years. And on the 18th, I was at the Congressman Glenn Ivy's Town Hall over in Sula, at the Sula High School. And I think he, I think it went the way he probably thought it was going to go, but it was a rough night for if it was a beginner. Oh, my God. But he did a great job, and it's a good thing that he did this because he should be an example for the rest of the congressmen and states, and the state senators. On the 26th, we have a job fair. That is going to be at the BCCC Baltimore City Community College. That's a job fair, please spread the word. We got a hashtag, "Help federal workers and non-federal workers in this day and time." We all got to help each other. And then just to give you a note, Eric's Law was passed, is going to the House now, and Senate Bill 872, Local Government Hiring and Promotion, Preferences for Veterans and Spouses of Service Members and Veterans Families Serve Act. The healthcare, this was Senate Bill 773, these are bills that are being passed, that are moving on. The health benefit plans, this is a calculation of cost-sharing contribution. And, take the clip off. The Senate Bill 432, Criminal Records Expungement and Maryland Judiciary Case Search Expungement Reform Act of 2025, reparations. Senate Bill 587, State Government, Maryland Reparations Commission, passed the Senate by 32 to 13, and has moved to the House of Delegates. This bill establishes the Maryland Reparations Commission to study and recommend benefits for individuals whose ancestors were enslaved in the state or who have been affected by historical government injustices. Safety and criminal offenses, this bill, Senate Bill 7, Department of Transportation, human trafficking awareness, training and response, see someone, save someone act. I want to give kudos to one of my neighbors. They sent a, over in the West Side community. Just yesterday, I had bought some scooters, and me and my son was riding the scooters over by the new Chipotle, right behind the Wawa down there. And I seen a gentleman parking the Dodge, it's a white Dodge Charger, and he looked kind of odd, out of place. And he parked the car, seen the gentleman getting out the car, and it just kind of felt funny and looked funny because it was kind of out of the place. Just so happened today, I got an email today, and from a constituent saying that that car was a stolen car. So we have to be aware. We have to do our part. So I'm just going to thank that neighbor of mine. Last, housing, Senate Bill 46, real property wrongful detainment actions. And few up-and-coming events. The Safe Summer Program, the Safe Summer Nights Program, this summer, we're going to be doing a three-on-three basketball tournament for some world medals, you know? So we're going to come in, sign up, it's going to be, we got to get the ages, but we're going to play together, work together, and have some fun this summer. And that's going to be June 20th, right? June 20th, starting June 20th at the Armory. And the city of Laurel, we're looking for 100 fathers, 100 fathers, this is going to be 100 Fathers' Day Breakfast. Looking for 100 fathers, and to come out to the Craig A. Mo Multi-Service Center, this is going to be Saturday, June 14th, from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM, 12:00 noon. And please spread the word, come out, you're a father, bring your child, son or daughter, come on out, we want to celebrate you. And that would be the end of my report. And, Mr. Mayor, floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. I want to pay my condolences too, not my condolences, but best wishes to Sergeant Patrick Henson, mother who's sick, wish her well. On March 10th, I attended Washington DC National League Congressional Congress, when the National League of Cities comes to our congressmen, and not congressmen, but elected officials throughout the United States, come to Washington DC to learn. And March 13th, I also attended Montpel Elementary School Walk Through. I was disappointed with the young kids, they didn't have like Virginia State University, so next year we got to work on that. But they did a great job highlighting HBCUs throughout the country. March 14th, we also attended ribbon cutting for the Board of Trades. Also want to acknowledge Ms. Jacqueline Jones, I call her honorary mayor, she's in the back back there, she was St. Mark United Methodist Church Mayor Woman of the Year. So congratulations, Ms. I tell everybody, if Ms. Jones decide to run for office, we're going to be in trouble. So stay outside the city. Also, in Arga Caribbean African Women Impact Awards, I attended that ceremony on Main Street, very impressed with that. And March 22nd, I attended Laurel Volunteer Rescue Squad Award Banquet. And April the 12th, announcement coming up, Black Maternal Health Month, it'll be April 11th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, at the Craig A. Multi-Service Center. So 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, 2025 Maternal Health Month. So I got some special guests here, so Mr. President, council, I'm going to come down to the podium and I'm going to recognize these special guests we have here. We're going to call the team up, and we're going to present the awards, and we're going to shake out all the kitchen hands when they start it up. Yeah, before we get started, I'll make an announcement first. These are managers right here as well. Before we get started with the state champions, I want to recognize a special guest here. We always talking about history, right? So even though Black History is in February, but we say Black History 365 every day of the year, and of course, it's Women History Month. I don't know if the president allowed this, but we're going to recognize her anyway. In the back, we got Colonel Gore, our Garrison Commander for Fort Meade, she's the first. She's the first woman to be the Garrison Commander of Fort Meade, and also the first African-American to be the Garrison Commander as well, so that's some history as well. So. I'm a member of 100 Black Men of Prince George County, we say what they see will their be. So you see a colonel right here that's in charge of a whole base of Fort Meade, NSA, and all those type of things. So Colonel Meade, thank you for coming, I mean Colonel Gore, thank you for coming. But also, Colonel Gore was rooting for that team y'all beat at Wise High School. Yeah, what's the name of the high school y'all beat? So her and her husband came out to support, we're really good friends now, they came out to support you guys as well, even though y'all beat them, but that showed a good sportsmanship. We appreciate that. So thank you, Colonel Gore, for coming as well. So the state champions.
Yeah!
We also got the athletic director here, Mr. Cleveland here as well. I feel like I had something to do with y'all's success because I was a referee when y'all JV team, you know? So I got y'all ready for the varsity level. But especially thanks to Coach Heinz, because Coach Heinz was the JV coach, and now y'all play on his JV team, and now y'all are the state champions of Laurel, so we really appreciate that. Coach Heinz, first year, head coach, second year, won a state championship. So Coach of the Year as well. And so what we do, right, as you can see, we got, not for you guys, the team, but for hopefully the parents and the visitors and things of that nature. Since it's been 45 years since Laurel won a state championship, we challenge 1,000 citizens inside the city of Laurel to donate $45, and that's 45 times 1,000, it'd be $45,000 that goes to athletic department. Mr. Cleveland would like that as well. But we want to, you know, give you guys some rings, and give you some jackets to recognize you that, so everybody out there, we're going to put it on our social media as well, though. $45, just skip dinner for the night, whatever, and donate $45 to Laurel Athletic Booster Club, before we can get these young people some state rings and the other nature. So with that said, I'm going to turn over to Coach Heinz, he's going to call the gentleman names, players' names out, and the managers, and council can recognize, we'll shake y'all hands and everything, then we take one group picture then.
Thank you.
You can say some of your ones, you know, Coach Heinz.
We just want to thank everyone for just the love and support of the program. These guys have been working hard, and the managers are working hard, and the coaches are working hard. So I'm just glad that these guys are able to just believe in what they put in their head, and I appreciate y'all, your love and support for them.
Send down one coach yet.
Okay, if I further ado.
This says the proclamation, citation of excellence for the Laurel High School basketball team, and recognition of your outstanding achievement in winning the 2025 Salon Arkanamp MPSSA Class 4A Boys Basketball Championship. Your hard work, teamwork, and sportsmanship have brought great pride and honor to Laurel High School and the entire city of Laurel. Your dedication to excellence both in off-the-court exemplified the spirit and the vibe we cherish in our community. You not only achieved remarkable success in competition, but also serve as exemplary ambassadors for our city. Let this citation serve as a symbol of your collective admiration and gratitude for your contribution to sporting excellence for our community. We celebrate your victory and the bright future lives ahead of you, each team member. So Coach, I'm going to get this to you first.
Thank you.
I guess you got the camera right there. She got the zoom lens. Just something like that. Comeback song? Move it away. He got to talk, though. Yeah, he got to talk on that, though. That's good, right there.
Christian Brown. Are we taking?
Yeah, we do take a good picture then.
Christian Coates, but is Christian good? Yep, he's in lacrosse. Demaryius Custis. Damian Durham. Terrence Asua-Mensa. He's going backwards here. Man, y'all walking around this way. Gabriel Gilchris. Gabriel Gilchris. Amadou Kaloga. Aiden Lee. Elijah Mahdi. Trace Shaw-McKay. Gilbert Osapo. Kareem Oyekin, he is not here today. Aaron Sissi-Wanyana. Jermaine Taylor. Kaden Turner. All right, and for our team managers. Soray Lyons. Brittenique Nicholson. Soha Shah. Mackaya Mitchell. Kailani Wilkinson, she had a game as well. She had a game as well. Kayla Villatoro. And I also want to acknowledge Aaron Simon, who's here. He does band and drum lines for us as well, but he also helped his band as well.
Every head coach can't do the job of the assistant coaches. So Coach Heinz, this is for you as well.
Thanks.
But we also want to recognize your assistant coaches because we know they put a lot of work in as well. So we got Coach Brian Owens.
He's not here.
Coach Horace Heinz. Coach Xavier McFattan. Coach Devon Powell. Coach Dante Powell. Coach Thomas Harrison. Coach Damian Dorham. Coach, stop giving me a hard time. A referee too, he always give me a hard time. Next year, it's going to be. And Coach Stedman Short?
He's not here.
He's not here, okay. So once again, our Laurel High School 4A Boys Basketball Team, state champions. And once again, like I said before, $45, we give these rings for these young men and ladies and coaches as well. Direct communication, how you want to do the picture? Don't go, we got to bring it back. See, we have another state champion. We have another state champion inside the building. And two-time state champion in 140-pound wrestling class, Alexandra Ford. In recognition of your outstanding achievement in winning the two-time state championship in 140-pound wrestling division, your hard work, discipline, and dominance has brought great pride and honor to Laurel High School and the entire city of Laurel. Your dedication to excellence both and off the mat exemplified the spirit and cherish in our community. You not only achieve remarkable success in competition, but also serve exemplary ambassador for our city. Two-time state champion. Would you sign? Thank you. So Colonel Gore, how we doing, Laurel? Coach Overton, come up, please. Any of your players here, wrestlers here? Okay, all right. Anyway, Coach Overton is our youth wrestling coach. And he's been coaching Laurel for many years. He moved out of Laurel and came back when I became the mayor. And his team won their first championship this year, coming back to Laurel the first time. And so all we do is make champions inside the city of Laurel, Colonel Gore.
That's right.
Congratulations, sir. You want to get a picture with us? Thank you. All right, we're good, council. I got a couple of proclamations and I'll be out of the way. This proclamation is National Vietnam Day. And so the city of Laurel encourage all citizens participating in activities to honor those American heroes, past and present. Colonel Gore, can you and Colonel Gore come and accept this award for us? Is that okay? We always like to give it to military veterans and that. So we got active duty people in the house today. We, you know, give it to you all.
Thank you so much.
You want to address, you want to say anything to the people? You don't have to, do you?
If I represent others or anything?
Represent anything, anything you say, tell me who you are.
So I think I've got a little peer pressure up here to speak. I'm going to say a couple of words since I got the floor. First, I want to address the football team, yeah. I meant basketball, yeah, yeah, that part. Thank you, honey. It's been a long day. I've been in meetings all day. Address the basketball team. I want to say congratulations. And yes, I am a Mustang, but that's only because of the name. But you all are my fans. So, you know, as a mom, I raised two beautiful girls and I can tell you how proud I am to see you guys up here. So don't let this be your stopping point. Continue to excel. Be champs in everything you do, not just basketball, on and off the court. Be great, okay? Because this is just the beginning. This is just the beginning of something great, okay? So don't let it stop here, guys. Let's make it happen. And as far as this proclamation goes, I want to say, Mayor, thank you so much. Because this year, this is very special to me, you know, to receive this on behalf of the Vietnam vets because this makes the 50th anniversary of their return home. And a lot of them did not return home. So this is very sentimental to me. So thank you very much for allowing me and my husband to do this. And it's the.
This last proclamation is called National Meat Out Day for those individuals or vegetarians that don't eat any meat. Anybody out there that's a vegetarian? No vegetarians out there? Guess it's because someone got to stay in the house. Well, anyway, the city of Laurel recognize National Meat Out Day. So we encourage everyone to stop eating meat for this week or this month. Eat a place-bent diet. So it's something that the citizen asks us to do every year to promote healthy habits and things of that nature. So but it's going to be kind of hard for me to stop eating meat, but we'll still enforce it, though. Thank you so much.
Yep, so. All right. Busy night tonight, busy night tonight. So the mayor has on agenda, Agenda Six. The mayor has reappointments. And council, did you have any questions or concerns?
I got to announce them.
Okay, please. Floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Angie O'Neal, I want to reappoint her to the Arts Committee, Arts Council from March 24, 2025 to March 24, 2028. And also Robert Wendley to the Youth Service Commission, same dates, March 24, 2025 to March 24, 2008. Ask the council for their confirmation to appoint these two individuals back to reappoint to those positions.
Okay, and that's the 2028?
Yeah.
Okay. And council, we had time to view the resumes. Did y'all have any questions or concerns?
Mr. President, I move to accept the appointments from the mayor as right into the record.
Could I get a second?
Seconded.
Madam clerk, can we get a roll call? We got a motion and a second.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Mills?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And now's the time for the general public hearing. We do have a sign, we have one of the sign-in sheets right now. If anybody is interested in speaking for the general public, there may be another sign-in sheet over there. If you have any ideas or concerns, you want to come up and address the council, mayor and the council. Right now, I have Connie Lucas. Ma'am, okay, I'm starting the, opening the public hearing at 6:42 PM. And ma'am, can you come up and give us your name and address, please? Thanks for coming.
Thank you. You said you're going to put something in the independent of how we can give a donation?
I'm sorry, ma'am. Can you give us your name and address?
I'm sorry. My name is Connie Lucas, 1018 Ward Street, Laurel, Maryland. I have a que, can I ask the question first and then why I'm here?
You have two minutes, please.
I have two minutes. Will the donation, where we can give a donation to the school, the athletic part of the school, will that be in the independent? I thought you said you would put that there.
Yeah, we'll probably post it on our social media, on the city's social media page.
Okay, but if you don't get social media.
Well, you can take that form right there.
This thing?
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay, I didn't know. Okay. I am here again to ask the council and the mayor to please put the crime or the, our crime report to put into that the street address, thousand and the street name of where the crimes are happening. This would give many of us residents a little bit of security of knowing what's going on, where it's going on, and giving us a little bit, feeling a little bit more safer when we're aware of things that are going on and where they're going on. I look at the March paper and it could, the report could be three times as big as what it is. There's a lot of empty space in our, the Laurel, the mirror, the Laurel, two pages. It could, I believe, be put there. The police department says they have no problem giving it to, I guess, you guys. I don't know if I ask, I'm not sure exactly how to ask that it be, what do they call it? Like brought to a vote or something? I don't know what the wording is. But I keep asking and I hope that you guys will put it in the paper. We want to know where the crimes are happening in Laurel. And thank you very much for listening to me. Thank you.
No, Mr. President.
And I'll close the general public hearing at 6:45 PM and begin Agenda Number Eight. Second public hearing and possible action on ordinance number 2039 and ordinance amending the general operating budget and capital improvement program of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025 and to provide an effective date. And Director Sella, you have the floor?
Work session and first meeting. Ordinance 2039 recognizes the changes to the department names with the dissolution of Crem for the Department of Emergency Management as well as the Department of Human Services, Craig A. Mo Laurel Multi-Service Center Program as well as the Department of Human Services, Laurel Helping Hands. Also for the operating budget, we're making a transfer of $7,500 from the training budget to the tuition budget. And for the capital improvement program, we're taking the remaining balances from Carroll Avenue, Park Avenue, and Cambridge Circle and reallocating them to Morton Place, Stanley Place, Eighth Street, Little Montgomery Street, sidewalk repair and replacement, curb and gutter repair and replacement, and excuse me, an additional $15,000 of peg money for the council chambers project for additional microphones. And that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you, Director Sella. Was there anyone to sign up for this? All right. So I will open the general public hearing at 6:47 and close at 6:47 PM. Counsel, did you have any questions or concerns? Floor is yours, counsel.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to recap for folks who may not have been with us during the previous meetings this month, some of the line items we see, there were some savings in some of the public works projects that we had had and basically we're reallocating that money to others of the public work progress. So the big numbers, but the big numbers of savings is also helping us shift it to some other line items. Overall, it's just that net $15,000 increase for the additional microphones. So but just to help fill some people in.
Yes, sir.
Will you finish? Okay, thank you. Counsel, anyone else? All right. I did have just a clear question for you. Just a, we mentioned, I mentioned it during the work session and that was just the splitting of the two departments. With the splitting of the two departments, it's the same funding that would have been for one, but now you're just splitting the two departments and splitting the funding, correct?
No, sir. From the very beginning of FY 2025 and ever since, we took Laurel Helping Hands from the county and created the multi-service center programs. And there's a separate maintenance budget managed by Mr. Bailey. But we have, from the beginning, budgeted separately for all three departments. So Emergency Management had its own funds. The multi-service center program. So Emergency Management had its own funds, the Multi-Service Center Program had its own funds, and Laurel Helping Hands had its own funds. There's no movement of funds because they all had their own. This part was just the changing of the names.
Okay, okay. All right, just.
Taken away the umbrella of Crem and creating Human Services, but everybody had their own money from the beginning.
Okay. Thank you very much. Well, hearing that, um, could I get a motion from the council?
Uh, Mr. President, I move that we, uh, pass Ordinance Number 2039, amending the general operating budget.
Counsel, a second?
I'll second.
Madam clerk, we have a motion and a second.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
President Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Sudnor?
I concur.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The ninth agenda this evening, second public hearing and possible action on Ordinance Number 2040. An ordinance of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, amending Laurel City Code Chapter 16 Taxation, Article One, Section 16 through 10, Elderly and Veteran Tax Credit Program, and providing an effective date. And the floor is yours, Councilman Simmons.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, and, uh, just to share with folks, this ordinance is really, or a resolution rather, is to update the city's elderly and veterans' tax credit program. So we have an existing tax credit for folks who are 65 or older, have been 10 years in their home, or are a qualifying veteran. And when we first adopted that tax credit, we had to restrict it to five years because the state required us to make it no more than five years. Um, the state subsequently lifted that restriction, and so we now have the ability to go back and lift the restriction in our city-level property tax credit as well. So in order to help folks benefit from that, I proposed this, uh, this resolution ordinance. Um, and, uh, something else I also clarified in the drafting of legislation was the calculation, which is on the first $500,000 of assessed value. So, um, definitely a pleasure to be able to bring this before council. Thank you for consideration and open to any questions.
Madam clerk, was there anyone to sign up for this ordinance?
No, sir.
All right. Counsel, do you have any, uh, ideas or concerns, questions, anything?
Mr. President, we still have to open the public hearing.
Correct. Thank you. For, it is 6:52 PM for the opening of the public hearing, and I will close at 6:40, 6:52 PM. And.
Mr. President, I move that we adopt Ordinance Number 2040.
Okay, can I get a second?
I'll second.
All right, madam clerk, we have a s, motion and a second.
Councilman Cole?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Simmons?
Yes.
President Mills?
Yes.
Mayor Sudnor?
I concur.
You have a, or, motion carries.
And I'd like to just say real quick that, uh, Councilman Simmons, we appreciate your, um, your work on that ordinance as well. And, uh, hopefully more to come. And nothing else, for the mayor and the city council, this meeting is adjourned.